Matt, we ready? All right, if you're with us, go ahead and stand and say the pledge and have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we thank you for another day we can come in here to take care of the business of Walton County. I pray that you'll just be with us and lead us and guide us, Lord, and give us the wisdom to understand what's being presented and the wisdom to make the right decision as these things of Jesus make. Amen. Who's up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt Carpenter, for the planning department. Uh, thank y'all for joining us in Defuniac tonight. Um, I had a special eclipse just for the occasion today. We don't often meet in Defuniac. Uh, tonight is, uh, the public hearing for, uh, the next round of our comprehensive plan, the next series of elements. Um, and we've had three good public hearings or public meetings so far, workshops, not public hearings. Uh, Freeport, South Walton Annex, and Rosemary Beach. Uh, I had good participation at each of those. Uh, some good, uh, good suggestions, uh, some good feedback. Uh, and we are here tonight to present, uh, what we believe, uh, should be, um, or what we recommend as the adoption, um, of the amendments to the comprehensive plan and the corresponding land development code section for chapter two. Uh, Kristen has worked really hard on this, uh, along with, uh, a team of folks, and she's prepared to present this to you tonight.
Hello. All right, we're having a public meeting in Defuniac in the rain on the eclipse day. So I'm sure that's gonna go over really well.
Life is good.
Um, but I appreciate you guys being here. I must get through these first. This is, um, like Mac said, this is part two. So we have one more part on the comprehensive plan and then we'll have worked our way through the elements. This is probably the most important, most complex part. Um, so we got a lot to get through tonight, um, and I'm gonna try to break it down for you and let you know where the policy decisions are so that you can make a recommendation to the board, uh, moving forward. We do not need to take action on the land development code, chapter two, tonight. We really just have it here for information purposes because we took so much stuff out of the comp plan, um, and moved it to the code. We wanted people to be able to see simultaneously where that was moving to. But we don't need to do anything with that tonight. It probably still needs some work, um, and we're gonna be revisiting that later when we do the code. So let's talk about, um, the comprehensive plan and, um, try to get to a good, uh, consensus opinion on the changes that are in there. We've been through this. You guys know the difference between the comprehensive plan and land development code. By this time, you know, our comp plan is our policy document. And, uh, very important that it sets policy and our land development code is our regulatory document. And that hierarchy explains that. We did that the first round. Okay, keep going. Okay, future land use element. Now, feel free to stop me when we're talking about this. Because this is, um, a lot to take in. It's zoning for the first time for Walton County. Walton County has not had zoning historically. We've had a future land use map that's functioned a lot like zoning, but in very different ways. And so I wanna make sure that we understand what this means moving forward in terms of how we do business, um, how we review developments, uh, and, and sort of how that framework operates, 'cause it is different. So I have these two maps here and you also have them in your, in your packet, smaller versions. So what, and, and the biggest change really that we have now is that there are two maps. There's a future land use map, which is gonna be in the comprehensive plan. And this is more of a long-term, twenty, thirty, fifty-year map even. Um, and you can think of it that way moving forward. We may make a change on there and not change the zoning ordinance. Um, because this is really the map that we look at to say, okay, in twenty years, we anticipate development here and we may need infrastructure, road improvements, or whatever, based on what we have on that map. So it's an aggregated map.
Where's that map at in our, our information?
It's in the back of your, um, tab two. It's broken down for the south end, but there's a big original map right at the back of all that future land use element, strike through and underline. And if you look on there, you'll notice that if you compare it to the new zoning map, it has far fewer categories. And I'm gonna explain how that works. Um, if you look at, at the slide here, the flume ca- these are just some examples of how the current future land use map was kinda aggregated up. So you'll see residential and then the current future land use map categories become the zoning categories. And they are allowed in the residential future li- land use category. So you have urban residential, residential preservation, low-density residential, neighborhood infill. Oh, you can't see that?
Page, I've got it on page fifty-four of a hundred and twenty-seven. That's the first.
Can you see the presentation?
Fifty-four?
Wait, you got a hundred and twenty-seven?
I got a hundred and fifty-four.
Oh, gosh, you guys ha- have this, um...
Which tab are you using?
Yes, L. Whopper.
I got item number two. So shoot, I guess it's like the third, chapter two?
Yeah.
I hope.
The second tab is future land use in my book.
Oh. It's in the very back of that hundred and fifty-four page document.
I went there, but it's not.
Okay, without, and then we just have to scroll.
Why don't you guys look at the big map, because I think it'll be easier. You see, this is the proposed zoning map?
Mm-hmm.
And it has lots of categories. That is our current future land use map. It is basically translated to the zo- to the zoning map. So you see all those categories? And then on the future land use map, there are very few categories. You take these out, this is flat proof. This is really it. So in residential, there's four implementing zoning districts. That's a little bit different. So what does that mean? Can you see that? How can I? Okay. Okay, good.
It's a huge file.
All right, I, all this technology, right?
Can you put it on here? On the screen?
There's kind of an example in the PowerPoint slide here. It's just three of the categories. But if you look at, um, tab three in my book, I don't know what it is in yours, page three of chapter two of the LDC, there's a table.
Uh, I've saw that it's in the same hundred and fifty-four, but it's way, uh, way, uh...
There's also a table.
I see that.
In the summary information that was in the very front of your materials. This stuff is really too big to do on iPads, I think. We're gonna have to kill some trees.
It's, uh, yeah, there's, the tables are, uh...
Um, chapter two of the land develop- of land development code?
Future land use element, is that?
It said, the first page says, "Chapter Two, Zoning Districts." This is land development code?
Yes.
On page three, there's a really handy table.
Mm-hmm.
It's two point oh-one oh-three. Do you see that?
Future land use element?
Go back.
Is that it?
Future land use element does not, that's, the comprehensive plan does not have the table. The land development code does, the chapter two. Um, I think they have different tabs than I do.
Go back again.
Yeah, but they have a different tab, so I don't know how to tell them to get to it.
Where are you, chapter two?
So it's chapter two of the LDC?
It looks like this. Let me show you what it looks like.
I got it.
Now I'll actually give you mine.
Yes, I got you now.
We've got it.
We got it. I got it now.
If you look on that, you'll see how the zoning in the future land use map categories work together. More importantly, though, uh, we gotta understand, um, how that, or what that means. So basically, if I wanna change my zoning, let's say I wanna go from residential preservation to neighborhood infill, that is gonna be a local decision under this framework. It will not go to the state for review. If I wanna go from residential to mixed use, it would go to the state for review because residential is not an allowable zoning district and a mixed-use future land use category. So that would require both a rezoning ordinance and a future land use map change ordinance, two ordinances. So that's a little bit different.
On the, the residential, could you just explain those four? What the densities are on those four, uh? I think I understand, but I wanna make sure I understand.
The densities have not changed, so they're still exactly the same. And that's a really important point to make, that no one's land use entitlements, densities, or intensities have changed whatsoever in any of this. Um, it's all the same. We have not changed anybody's map designation or changed their, um, densities or intensities.
I- is there some way to, or is there some mechanism to add, uh, more categories in the future without?
Yes, you could add many zoning districts under that residential flume category. You could have ones with different densities and intensities. And you could do that with just a local ordinance.
Uh, when I, the, the example, it, the, um, down at the ocean, was it Ocean Club Estates? The, the one that was up a couple of months ago? And there was a problem because there wasn't an intermediate?
Right, we do not have a half-acre land use category or zoning district, which would be now.
But is there a way to add one in the future?
Absolutely. I mean, we could do that now or we can do it, uh, in the future, but that is easily done.
That would be a, at least give an option in the future to, to, uh, to a future planning commission that wants to compromise.
Yes, mhm.
'Cause we didn't have that opportunity and it...
That's right, right, yeah.
Controversy.
We'll have the opportunity to change that, though, when it comes to, to the development order. I mean, that's gotta come through the development order process. So you...
But if we added a, another category, then it could happen without having to go through...
I'd recommend that, actually, rather than, um, putting development order conditions outside of a development agreement. Yeah.
I, I'd rather just have a, a, a list of options that we could, so that you wouldn't have to lick the calf at once.
We can make that, um, recommendation if you guys want, when you make your, um...
I, I understand. I think that's a good idea.
It would just be there if, if, it wouldn't be that we're putting it on people's properties, but it would be there if anybody needed it i- in the future, yes.
Conceptually speaking, just bigger picture, my understanding is that comprehensive plans are like the themes, the goals, the policies, and the land development code is the actual regulations. An issue we had with our comprehensive plan is it was regulatory in wording.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're gonna talk about that in a little bit because there's, there's something important, I think, or kind of an important framework to understand with zoning, um, and I, I'm gonna get to that here, um. So just real quick, what did not change? Um, there's a couple of policy issues here. We already talked about densities and intensities. And we left floor area ratios and impervious surface ratios in the comprehensive plan. Those were regulatory, um, you know, that's an option to move to the code as well. In this draft, they're, they're left in, um...
Why did we, why did we leave them in?
Uh, you know, just gives more guidance to your densities and intensities. Ours are not, um, really, really tight. I mean, I, but if they did get tighter, that may be something that we would wanna move to the code, I think, in the future. And that is a tool that, that we can use, uh, that fits well with zoning if you wanna change the character of areas or how development occurs, um, and we, we could talk about that.
So, so which would be easier to manage, to, for it to be in the comp plan or to be in the, the LDC? Which would be the easier to manage in the future?
We, I would like for as much of it, I, I personally don't think that the ones we have for our residential categories are very meaningful. Um, they could just go away, as far as I'm concerned. We have to have them for commercial because we have to have an intensity standard by state statute for commercial development. Um, but, um, for residential, you could go either way, really. You could put them in the code or, or, or not have them, or strengthen them and make them a little bit more meaningful. But, um, right now, they're really not, um, offering much guidance.
And the, I guess, the huge houses on little lots, um...
Exactly, yes, yes. I mean, that is a way to address that, should anybody decide to do that.
Would it be better to have that in the LDC or the...
Yes, I, I think if you have, um, a regula- something regulatory, it should be in the LDC. And the reason is, people have different lot situations and we have other regulations that intervene, such as stormwater, such as preservation. We have other things that can affect what happens on a lot. And so having all of those intervening factors sometimes can create hardships or unique situations. It's, um, so it makes more sense.
And if I'm, if I'm a developer, if I'm a landowner that's trying to develop my property, wouldn't it make, have all those factors in one place for me to look at rather than have to go to the plan and the...
Absolutely, yes.
So what, wouldn't it be better to move into the LDC? So when I look at, when I'm starting to develop my property, I only have to look at one place. Does that...
Yeah, that's ultimately the goal, I think, so that's...
Yes, that would be my question. Why would we leave them in the comp plan and not go ahead and move them over? I mean, is it...
Provide some amount of structure that, and stability, um, for the various districts, but...
For, and for commercial, we have to. We'll have to leave them for commercial. Because that is the intensity standard for commercial, um, unless we went to like a square footage or some, which we don't want, we don't wanna do. Um, so we would have to, but for residential, um, mhm, it's definitely an option.
Yeah, and, and I think one of the, the goals is, is, is John Q. Citizen, who doesn't wanna have to hire up all these engineers and all this stuff. If I wanted, uh, the Barker case that came up, you know, you don't wanna have to go to several different places. You just wanna be able to go to one place to build my house, so...
And just for clarification, we're not talking about the coastal Dune Lake ISR.
Oh, no.
Okay, that is gonna stay in the plan. That's in the conservation element. I just wanna make that clear to the public that's listening. That is not, um, what we're talking about.
I'm talking about a single-family dwelling.
Regarding commercial and density, uh, understanding that there might be state standards that could be generally cited and referenced, but not necessarily cited exactly. I mean, is that possible, like prescriptive versus, uh...
Well, uh, one example is we have, um, a stormwater, we call it a best management practice alternative that's in the code, um, that if you develop your single-family lot at a forty percent ISR and you do a pile-supported foundation, you don't have to do any stormwater management. Um, it's like an alternative. So, you know, kinda having those kinds of things in the same document and marrying them up together, I think will create a better situation for our customers. And we ultimately desperately want to make the single-family permit process as easy and smooth as possible.
Uh, I, I just have one more about the, is, if a piece of property is residential and you wanted to build multifamily on it, how, how does the zoning work? Will you need a zoning change or can you...
It depends on what zoning district you're in. For instance, if you're a neighborhood infill, um, it is possible to do multifamily, uh, based on whatever density your compatibility analysis yields. Uh, I mean, not, you know, it's, uh, gonna be a huge apartment, but it could be, uh, you know, a small condo or, um, something like that. Um, I have a map of the vacant neighborhood infill, which is really interesting. I have vacant neighborhood infill and I have vacant mixed use, which I think if anybody wants to see that, um, later, they're really interesting maps. The, all of the vacant neighborhood infill just about is in Inlet Beach. So they have a challenge that we're gonna work with them on moving forward, just about.
You, you talk about density and stuff, but it, to me, and like we had on this, what was it, a zero condominium? To me, that was a huge issue where you've got a twelve-unit condominium complex being built on a street, down the street from that condominium complex, you have a single-family residence that sleeps twenty-nine people. That single-family residence that sleeps twenty-nine people is not a single-family residence. It, it's, it's a rental property.
Yeah, it is, but unfortunately, the way our code describes it, it's a single-family and, you know, there's, yeah, yeah.
And there's, has to be a way... You have to be able to differentiate between, you know, what is a single-family residence. One thing, those houses that, that... With their rental properties. They're, and they're, but they're, they're, their footprint on the lot is huge.
Floor area ratio.
And the parking is minimal at best. So is there some way we could tighten, tighten up the, the parking to a square footage and maybe, so you can only have a impervious surface on fifty percent or...
Yes, and if you, if we do wind up doing something like that, I would recommend that we do go with moving these standards to the code and think about that at, you know, later after we've had, you know, you could give us direction.
I think that's where they should be. I said, that's why they should be in the code, because I think those things have to be looked at because I think a lot of the issues that are, that are occurring down there are those types of properties where you've got, you know, five families that come to vacation together, each of them bringing two cars and they're, and they're vacationing in a house that has three parking places or two parking places.
Right, and, and then we have stormwater requirements on some lots. We have parking requirements. And then you have the ISR, um, and floor area ratio metrics. So, you know, bringing all those things together, you could, or at even height, um, limit the size of those structures, but that's really a policy decision that we did not do in here. But I think the zoning framework gives you a better chance of doing that than having a regulatory comp plan. Because you do have the ability for relief.
It gives us some flexibility looking at things because right now, we don't have it. I mean, and, and when you're looking at those types of structures, sleeping twenty-nine people on a weekly rental plan is a hotel.
I've got a house next to me that sleeps twenty-one.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a single-family residence.
That's a hotel.
And, and, and the big angst is when y'all get in the pool at twelve o'clock at midnight. Okay.
Well, I, I think the, the years, or the... I think the times of, of easy properties to, to fit are, I mean, we just about built all those. So now the, the properties are gonna be more and more problematic. And if you don't have good, solid rules, then we run into that, the twenty-nine, I mean, the monster house that...
Well, I'd rather have a condo that's got the pool on the roof. But that's a lot less disruptive in the parking underneath it than that twenty-nine...
I mean, how do you define that twenty-nine beds in a house as anything but single-family residential?
I mean, I don't know a mom and daddy and twenty-seven kids.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if we can get into the regulation of, yeah.
Now, can you do that somehow in, in something to regulate the rental part of it?
We can't, right now, state law reemphasized, we're making a distinction between owner-occupied, single-family home and in renting.
I was, I was supposed to ask you, wasn't there a state law that's, that took that out of account, the county's hands?
Yeah, we can't get into the rental aspect of it, but we can get into the size.
If, if I've got a half-acre lot, for example, that we can build fifty percent of the lot and we can have the parking based on square footage, so I don't care if it's two people living in the house and that's fourteen lots, I mean, fourteen parking spaces, that's fine with me. But what I don't want is twenty people in the house and two parking places.
As the situation, we want to avoid all...
Yeah, and anything we can do to make this easier on the staff going forward to, so that y'all don't get beat up, I think the, the better off we are.
We just get beat up no matter what. That's okay.
Well, but there's, if we can do something to...
Yes, absolutely.
It, it just needs to be clear and there needs to be ways to explain it. Right now, you can't explain it. I mean, there's no way to understand it.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, it's kinda, there really is no limit. We don't have the regulatory authority to not, to do those structures right now. So, you know, we can either change or we can keep it the way it is or...
What's your recommendation?
Well, this is a huge policy decision to, to limit these types of structures. I mean, there's certainly enough community angst, um, you know, that I've heard repeatedly. And I, I fully understand that the mixture of these rentals with people that are living there full-time is, is problematic. So, you know, I am ready to give the tools to solve that, um, given the direction.
That wasn't answering my question. Do you need, do you need us to make a motion to... I mean, what, what I'm asking for, I mean, what do you recommend? You're the...
What, what I'm asking for, I mean, what do you recommend? You're the, you are the expert, okay?
If, if you wanted to limit the size of those structures, there are regulatory mechanisms. We can limit height. We can limit the area of the lot that it takes up. We can limit part, we can add parking, we'll limit the size of the structure. All of those things will work together.
Well, I would like to see, I guess, is something that you can put together that I can understand.
Okay. I could do that.
Because if I can understand it, most people out there in the community can understand it.
Can you move it over to the, and you said moving it to the LDC would give y'all the ability to write those standards? Me and Teddy can understand.
Matrix and I will, will put something together and we can bring that back when we do the land development code at chapter two.
I would appreciate that because like I said, it, it, it doesn't do any good to leave it where it's at and not address it while we're going through this.
And if we don't address it.
Because it's a huge issue out there.
If we don't address it, we're setting ourselves up for.
And, and, and you, you hear the term all the time, kicking something down the road, and you can keep kicking it down the road and not addressing it. But while we have this here, if we can address it, you know.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. I mean, because there's got to be a way to do it. I saw a question out in the.
I did?
Yes, I'll go ahead and let you.
Are you talking about something that you're going to do by zoning district? Are you talking about just in general, a different parking? I'm just asking.
Well, we're just trying to, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm looking to them to make a recommendation.
And let us, let us look and decide. And there's a lot of analysis that needs to go into that.
I understand it's a policy decision, but we're not here to make policy. I mean, we may be, but you're the expert to tell us what we need to do. Yeah.
And we, we can tell you what we want. You just kind of tell us how to do it.
That's all I need.
Yeah.
So the floodplain regulations are still in here. That's another decision. If we want to combine those into one place in the LDC. And we're going to look at that later this month with a focus group with the engineers. So we'll, we'll come back with that.
What would be, what would be more efficient? To put it all in the LDC would be more efficient or?
Yes, but we need to make sure that we don't do anything to affect our community rating system score. So we got to be really careful. So I would like to have some time to fully make sure that's correct. Also, the scenic corridor language, it's still in here, but we may move that to transportation in the future. I just want everybody to know for the sole purpose of putting everything in one place. So the substantive changes here with how this works, and I'm really just talking about the future land use element because like I said previously, we don't need to worry about zoning right now and we'll bring that back later. But one of the, the bigger changes is we would allow the mixed-use zoning districts and mixed-use flume category in North and Central Walton. We created four planning areas in this framework because we're really not North and South. We're really North, Central and South. And we have two cities that are important in the central region, Freeport and Dufuniac.
Could you describe where those four are?
I have a map.
South, I know, but where are the others at?
So we use census tracts for the division as well as the future land use map. So there is a technical reason why we divide these that we'll get into later that helps us do our planning work. But north, if you were to put this on a future land use map, this is really all ag and ag, lower density ag and ag, general ag designation.
Dog's country.
It's country. And it's very different. There are people up there and there's farming operations that have a different lifestyle.
Kevin.
Right.
Right. And, and, and very important. And then you have your Dufuniac area, which is north, central, and then the Freeport area, which is south-central. And we wanted to be able to do different things for those cities and, and based on what's happening.
Mossy heads included with Dufuniac. Is that, am I seeing right?
Yeah.
Looks like it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. This whole, this line I see.
The I-ten ninety corridor basically is a north-central.
Yeah, and you have changing land use patterns down south here, so there's a reason for that distinction. And then South Walton stays the same as it was always defined in the original, in the comprehensive plan we have today.
That's a lot more realistic than, yeah.
One of the things this allows us to do is offer different planning solutions.
Makes a lot of sense because those are distinctly different areas.
Yeah.
Whereas before, you may recall, we had running them in three categories. Those categories are only available in South Walton. Those are only available in North Walton and those can be reavailable though.
Right.
This, this expands on that and refines it. So hopefully we get it to my circle.
So you say, you're saying that we're going to allow those two categories in the north and the, basically countywide?
Well, this is one of the decisions I think we need to make if we want to just do north and south-central or allow them in North Walton. I would recommend north and south-central only because of the availability of infrastructure potentially and because of the whole lifestyle in the north.
What about the area around Paxton? Shouldn't, shouldn't that area have, be, shouldn't they be countywide so that we can avail ourselves in Paxton if we can ever talk anybody to move it up there?
You could.
I would prefer that.
Okay. Well, that's how it is written now. So if, if that's the, the wishes of this body and.
I don't, I don't think we ought to cut ourselves out from maybe getting a development or something to move into Paxton if we can talk them into it. My land might become valuable one day. By the time my grandchildren get old enough.
Well, it gets back to the options thing. At least we have some options because previously, if someone did want to do that type of development and had the necessary infrastructure and market, et cetera, then they wouldn't even be allowed to do it.
I know Paxton is, is just spending a half a million dollars on infrastructure.
Wonderful.
Development, so. I mean, they're trying up there, so why, we don't want to create a rule that would.
Prevent them.
Prevent them from.
Okay, then we will, then just stay the way, that's the way it's currently written. It's allowed countywide. We also allowed conservation residential countywide, which previously was only allowed in South Walton. And in this draft, conservation residential is expanded to include open space and farmland. So if someone wanted to do a true conservation subdivision and you could be preserving farmland, you could be preserving whatever, then you would have that potential countywide where, where we don't have that now.
Thank you.
The, and important thing to note about conservation residential, the open space requirements are moved to the land development code. So that gives flexibility there that was not there previously. You could potentially ask for variance and we may even need further refinement there. Right now, what we have is kind of a straight, you know, sixty percent is wiped off. And it doesn't matter if you have forty percent wetlands or eighty percent wetlands or whatever that you're trying to conserve, it's just sixty percent. We try to have regulations that are tied to real issues and are not arbitrary. And so, you know, it's a little bit problematic in that way to me, just from a professional standpoint, because it's not really tied back to any of our public issues or conservation issues. It's, it's really an arbitrary takeoff. So we may look at that future, in the future, when we look at the code a little bit more. But right now, those percentages are removed from the comprehensive plan. Another important distinction, neighborhood plans and planned unit developments become zoning map overlays. This is something we've gotten a little bit confused in the past and I think this is going to kind of help us to straighten it out a little bit. So your neighborhood plans and your planned unit developments cannot vary, if you will, the comprehensive plan. So whatever policy we have in a comprehensive plan, if it's density or whatever, we cannot vary that with something that's in the land development code. We can vary things that are in the land development code through the PUD process. So you want to set that break or, you know, you want to do some kind of different kind of unique development and that's traded off by the amenities and different things that you're adding to your development under the PUD scenario. So they can't override density and intensity though, because that is a comprehensive plan policy. So, you know, there's kind of a flip side there really. This gets back to that ISR and FAR. If a neighborhood plan wanted to have a greater requirement for impervious surface area or, I mean, ratio or FAR, because those are in the comprehensive plan, they would not be able to do that if neighborhood plans or land development code zoning map overlays. So that gives further credence to what you were saying earlier about possibly removing those. Flip side is though, that the PUDs would also be able to avail themselves of having that in the code. Make sense? Okay. Black Creek Neighborhood Planning Area is now Black Creek Special Planning Area because we're trying to make a distinction between neighborhood plans and, and Neighborhood Planning Area Program kind of went away. So it's, it has the same entitlements. It has its own zoning districts. See, compatibility is a bad word. You see, I have on here, right now, that's a bad word. So there are some changes here in the comprehensive plan that's important to know about. Buffering standards, as in tree buffers relocated to the LDC. And it will come back in a variable buffer format. So instead of just ten feet, no matter what you got next to what, it'll be, you know, if you have heavy industrial next to residential, it may be bigger. If you have commercial next to commercial, maybe you don't need one at all. So it will take into account the different uses and come up with an appropriate buffer and give alternatives in terms of planting materials for people to use. Usually the way that works is the bigger the buffer you have, the less plants, smaller the buffer, the more plants. There is a revised policy dealing with compatibility in the mixed-use category. This sets the policy tone for us to move forward with compatibility standards in the code. It gives context-sensitive and design-related requirements. Important to understand. So if, what we have in South Walton is kind of unique. We have very dense and tense mixed-use categories and then you just drop down to low-density residential. There's not a lot of transition. It's, that's just the way it is. And so we are in a position, if we don't want to change those categories, we need to come up with a way to make them work together better. Policy issue probably moving forward, not in this round, but small neighborhood, that land use category requires a minimum of ten acres and we don't hardly have any that meet that criteria. So in a future phase, we probably need to contact these owners and see what, what do you want to be. Okay, so important point for the government, I mean, for the, the public that may be listening, you know, we're moving all this stuff to the land development code and, you know, why are we doing that? Are we trying to be sneaky? Well, don't panic. I'm with the government. The good news is, you can still challenge the land development code. If we change the land development code or we pass an ordinance that makes the land development code inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, there is still an opportunity for an affected party to challenge to the Department of Economic Opportunity. So by doing this, we're not trying to circumvent the ability for people to challenge at all. That is still there. But when we do do this, I think, this has been kind of my speech, when we had a regulatory comprehensive plan, we really weren't able to put a lot of regulations there. We weren't really able to get into the defining of compatibility and different things because there was no way to vary that. And if you kind of load up your comprehensive plan with that kind of stuff, you're going to have unintended consequences and unique situations that you can't mitigate. By creating the zoning framework, you have more potential to do whatever it is you want to do in your planning areas. And I think that that's really an important point to make for the decision-making bodies and for the public. You actually have more of an opportunity with this framework to do more regulatory things or not. I mean, it can stay the way it is, but at least people have the chance for administrative relief if those things don't work, given a unique property situation. So I might just tell you a little bit about chapter two, just as, after that, what I just said. Here's the zoning framework that is in here. It is Euclidean zoning, but only kind of partially because we have so many unique mixed-use categories, especially in South Walton. And we have our traditional neighborhood communities, which are very form-based. Form-based is another type of zoning where you regulate by the form and the appearance of the building really and how it works with the public realm, instead of regulating by use. Euclidean zoning is regulating by use. So we kind of have a hybrid, really. We have mixed-use categories that allow for you to do as much form-based stuff as you want. And then we have our single-family and our residential areas that are kind of protected. We didn't go fully form-based because we just figured we would get slaughtered if we tried to do anything to those regu- residential areas and that makes sense. So we have primary uses with zoning, these we call as-of-right uses, that you're good to go if you're doing that use in that zoning district. Accessory uses, conditional uses, those are uses that are only allowed if you do certain things. This is a little bit different. We have some of that in our comp plan, but that can be further defined with a zoning framework. Then we have special development standards, which we had some in our comp plan, but we moved those to the code. And we have the framework for special exception uses, which we currently don't have any. Special exception uses are things that are only allowed in certain districts if the, either they can be staff-approved or they can be approved by the Board of Adjustments or the Planning Commission, however you want to set that up. And usually there's some criteria associated with those. We don't have any of those yet, but zoning framework gives you the ability to do that.
So the, by changing this to these districts, then they, all these standards would then apply to the north end as well?
Yes.
So all the.
I mean, go ahead, sorry. I may not be understanding.
All the, in the future, these things would, could come into play in the north as well, if we find somebody who, who can, who wants to develop.
Yeah, and you can do different things for different planning areas, you know, just, you, you have a lot more ability to do things and do it locally without going through a huge state process. It takes months, 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 months. You know, there's a lot of advantages.
We want to streamline as much as possible if we can get somebody that wants to.
Let me ask you this. These changes aren't going to necessarily, if, if someone owns a piece of property today, making these changes is not, is it going to change what they can do on their property in the future?
Not, currently in this comprehensive plan draft, if we were to go with compatibility standards, more robust, not necessarily change what they can build, but change how that would look. You know, I'll give you an example. Let's say in neighborhood commercial, we decided that in order for that to be compatible with a neighborhood, it needed to have an articulated facade. You know, no straight wall, metal wall with no windows, because that is not compatible with the neighborhoods. That can bring people's property values down, whatever. You know, we may have some kind of a standard like that, so it wouldn't change that they could have the commercial use there, but it may change how it would look.
Okay, that makes sense.
But that, none of that's in here right now. That would have to be added in the future.
Yes, we have only set a policy in here that we are going to do that. And it really is for the transition from mixed-use to residential and the transition from like commercial or neighborhood commercial from residential.
Currently, are there any industrial areas in the, in the north?
Yes, mm-hmm, absolutely. And I will mention that we did receive a grant to do a land use and. to do a land use and transportation infrastructure study that the re- West Florida Regional Plan Council is going to be heading up. They will look at three thirty-one corridor, and I anticipate some linkage of economic development planning with that project and sort of how that works with our comprehensive plan, which will be really cool. Not that we don't have enough to do, but we're, we're going to make it work. Okay, let's see, um. Uh, we've, I think we've already hit all of this stuff. There's a easy ta- reference table, um, for what's allowed in each zoning district in the back, which is really handy. And will make things a lot easier for everybody. You don't have to look through pages and pages of policy.
Yeah, it's actually pretty nice.
Okay, so that wraps up future land use and zoning. Any questions?
Is, is there, is there any land use in that, in the list that allows parking lots without a building? In other words, if I wanted to just build a parking lot?
Yeah, I don't know if it's an accessory structure. Mac may know better than I do if it's an accessory use or if, um, in some codes it has to be accessory to a primary use. I'm not sure. Is there, there is something.
You planning on charging for parking?
No, I, I, but the parking is a big issue in the south end, so.
They wanted to build a parking lot.
So if I wanted to build a parking lot and charge people this, is there any land use that would allow that?
Where there's a commercial use available, that's something that you could do.
Okay.
Um, we would also look at that as a neighborhood commercial use because the parking is serving that immediate neighborhood.
So I could, I could build something like that.
A parking lot that's a, could be a primary use.
Okay. Especially if you build a triple-decker.
Well, I might not get that by y'all, but.
And we may have some of those coming.
Is, did I read something in here about impact fees or is there a?
Yes, um, the, we have removed reference to proportionate fair share. We may have to put it back. I mean, the policy decision has not been made on that yet, but we do have a study underway to look at, um, a different structure for transportation mitigation. So we're going to be looking at impact fees and mobility fees and different things, and we're trying to get that before you guys hear within the next month or so, uh, hopefully.
What's the difference in the two? Is it when it, when it's paid or who pays it or, I mean, what's the?
They're all kind of pay to, to, to play approaches really. Um, the difference with the mobility fee is that it's a lot more flexible. It's statutorily defined, so we can use it for things like multimodal. Like, say for South Walton, that's incredibly important because we probably won't be doing major road expansion on thirty-eight, for instance, but we may have transit. We may have park and ride. We may have, uh, bike, pet improvements we want to make with those fees, so.
So, so impact fees for lack of, could be used for those things?
Mobility fees can be used for those things. Yes, and there is a way to do multimodal, uh, impact fees, but you're outside of that statutory framework, so it's, it gets a little bit complicated with your studies. You have to assign basically, um, bike and ped trips to projects and, yeah, it gets kind of.
When, when's the, when was the last traffic study done in the south end?
Well, there was a few. I mean, by traffic study, there, the, do you mean?
What we're basing our, our fees on.
Oh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen?
Recently updated.
Been recently updated, okay.
Yeah, um, yeah, it's in, in good shape. Um, and they're adding all the, um, old projects as well, going back and adding all the old projects. So we'll be using that. You have to use that for impact fees too. You have to have a study. You have to have a capital improvements program with any of these options. They're all kind of the same in that way. Intergovernmental coordination is also in this packet. Um, uh, there's really just one, one policy issue here and we have the public schools facilities element coming up next. Public school concurrency was removed from statute, um, back when they did all the major changes to the concurrency program. And we've had some communication from school board staff and probably need to decide if we're going to, you know, continue to leave a concurrency framework in there, even though it's, doesn't really accomplish anything because of the, um, what happens with that is the way the statute's written is if you can send the children to a school anywhere in your school district, even if it's like way across the bridge, you know, from three thirty-one, then we don't have to collect from the developers, basically. So we would have to rewrite that and create areas or to where it was effective, because right now we're under that framework where we have capacity at other schools, so you don't charge. And we don't, I don't think we have capacity problems, but we're going to get a breakdown from the school board, um, and find out, you know, what we want to do moving forward. So if we do delete trans, uh, school, public school concurrency, um, then we would put all those coordination mechanisms here into the intergovernmental coordination element, because it still is important that we coordinate and that we let them know about developments and that we, um, you know, are working together to ensure that they benefit from our planning and vice versa.
Didn't I read in there also that you coordinate with the cities and with the neighboring counties?
Yes, yes.
What's this council that, that's got Geneva County and Coen County, or has it ever actually met?
I don't know, and that's something that I was looking at and, you know, figure out. I mean, we do have some statutory requirements that we need to, um, work with, you know, our neighboring counties and with our cities, especially in, with the three thirty-one project, clearly we'll be working with Freeport um, quite a bit, and I intend to get both, all of the city's, uh, future land use maps and see how that works with our map. Um, just so that we can be on the same page.
And shouldn't it, like, Freeport, for example, shouldn't those, they sort of match up our land use and their land use, where, where they're going? Shouldn't there some, be some sort of coordination?
It's nice when we do that. Um, it, there's no requirement for, for that to happen. Um, but, you know, I think certainly in this project that we're going to be doing, that'll be something that we would look at. Um, because you would want that continuity or, and, and our, our comp plan does talk about the transitioning areas around our cities as being, um, growth areas, important areas, and so we're kind of there.
I would, I guess if they got a, you wouldn't want to, if they have a residential area, you wouldn't want to have a industrial area right next to it. I mean, it'd be, so there's got to be some sort of coordination.
So we'll be looking at that next round, and if we do, we'll come back to this element and add some stuff. Um, economic development is, um, stricken in its entirety. I know. It's not required by statute and it's outdated, and there are other economic development plans that have sort of superseded that it would probably be best for us to use those plans and integrate what they come up with into our, our plan. Um, just in various areas of how the plan would interact with those plans. Um, and that three thirty-one corridor is going to do, study is going to do some of that. So, um, just work with those agencies and organizations and those plans and ensure that our comp plan at least is not in the way of any economic development efforts. And really, planning is an economic development tool. So we would want those things to be coordinated, but right now we don't need to keep this, um, element. So that is it. So what I, just to summarize what I heard from you, um, we're interested in creating a half acre zoning district in the, when we get to the code, to chapter two. We're interested in looking at, um, the issues with our residential, uh, versus the large rental houses and how could we come up with a framework that would mitigate some of the, the problems that people are experiencing in their neighborhoods? And we're going to bring that back to you when we do the code section.
Anything else?
Yeah, I had a quick question, just something. Uh, where would, um, historical preservation fit in all this?
That's actually in the housing element, um, believe it or not. There, we, we talked about leaving a policy or a couple of policies in there um, that dealt with identifying historical structures and seeking grant funding. And, and, because right now we really don't have a good inventory, and then sort of seeing where we were at. Um, besides Greaton and Point Washington, we don't have a good idea of what's out there. And Defuniac has some, uh, strong program from what I hear.
We talked about that not too long ago, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
That was part of the.
Yeah.
Housing element. There was a lot of policies in there related to, you know, and I think we settled on, first, let's find out what we have and then see what we can do. Yeah.
And it's nothing, you know, it's everywhere in the county. It's not just in one area of the county.
And all of these things create, you know, staff and funding demands, so we'll be talking about that moving forward with the board, right?
And we got your back.
Tell me what you need.
Right, okay, so that's it.
Commissioners, anything else? Any questions, comments, concerns? See nothing, we will stand adjourned.
We can, yes.
Need a motion?
Motion on the future land use element, intergovernmental coordination and, um, economic development.
You want them done separately or all at once?
Oh, yeah. Golly, we're just zipping through.
So quiet, I forgot about it. My, my bad.
Do you want those in three separate motions?
Let's, let's, just take public comments first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there anybody who would like to speak on any of this stuff we talked about today? I know you can't sit down there and say nothing, okay? So come on up here.
I really want to just not do it. All I actually wanted to, I'm sorry, because I know the secretary's job, so Melissa Ward with Dunlap and Chipman. All I want, you're not talking about the zoning issues tonight. You're going to do that another day, right?
The land development code.
Yes.
The land development code, it's another night. Okay, so I'll save part of that for later. And then the other is, I want to commend you and your staff for what you're doing. This is a long time in coming. It's a lot of hard work. And I can appreciate where y'all are and I appreciate what they've done, and that was, uh, official from Dunlap and Chipman. And, and, um, the last thing was, you mentioned, you were talking about the parking requirements. I know that's in the future, but I, um, and I know that that's something that we're, they're going to have to do a study on before we get there. Are you going, and I'd like to ask you all to consider for the next meeting, when you come up with zoning, is to look at whether or not there'll be a committee put together to take a little closer look at that, because those are some issues that came up once before. It was a hot issue. And instead of it becoming a hot issue, maybe we get some round tables to help with some of that. They're doing a great job. We just don't want to make sure.
I just want to clarify.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The direction I heard was dealing with residential only.
Right, and if it's located strictly with the zoning districts, and I'll give you an example to be very clear. Um, uh, Commissioner Gleywell was talking about the Paxton area. If you have a particular area like Greaton Beach, for instance, if you have a house that's five thousand square feet, six thousand square feet, you might need seven or eight parking spaces. Makes sense on little tiny lots or quarter acre, eighth of an acre, sometimes less. Um, I don't know where Mr. Gleywell lives, but he probably doesn't live on an eighth of an acre. And so if he decided he was going to build five thousand square feet, does it matter how many parking spaces he has?
He were in a pasture.
He could, right, you know, his grandbabies can come up, mom and daddy can bring the grandbabies over and park anywhere. So those are some concerns. Is it going to be zoning based? Like, this is where it is? Because obviously North Walton doesn't have the same issue.
Just speaking from, from me, yeah, it would, and that's why I was asking specific questions about specific areas, because
Right.
the one thing, the one thing that we don't want is the one size fits all thing.
One size don't fit all in Walton County.
Right, and this is the opportunity to kind of take care of those issues.
Thousand square foot house on, on mine and you wouldn't see the neighbors. I mean, so it's.
Right.
So nobody cares, but down in the south end, somebody cares.
Well, absolutely, and not always just down in the south end. Don't get me wrong. I live in Freeport. I don't live on a big piece of property. And my neighbors, bless their heart, they have seven thousand friends. Seven thousand, I swear, each one of them. And they block my driveway every night. So I get it. I do agree, in certain areas, we need to look at parking and whether or not you're, you know, what you're doing.
Uh, parts of, uh, Defuniac and Oakwood Hills.
Where there's higher density and a smaller lot size, you need to look at those requirements. I agree, one hundred percent.
Right.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Closed public comments? Do we want individual motions or just one motion?
You can handle it in one motion if you don't have any changes to the staff recommendations. Do we need specific decisions on?
No, no, because everything they were talking about is really code-related.
Okay. So if you're fine with all three, you can approve them all three in one motion.
That'd be a lot easier.
But we approve all three?
Second.
You have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else we need to do before I say we're adjourned again?
Well, I'm sorry. I missed my stuff because you mentioned the ISR for residential, which would be a change to the comprehensive plan. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we want to remove the ISR for residential, uh, or the, um, ISR floor area ratio, not Coastal Dune Lake, from our residential in the comprehensive plan and put that in the code, that would need to be included.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Karen, do you understand what that is?
Explain my motion to her.
Explain the motion.
They are going to remove the ISR and floor area ratio standards for residential development from the comprehensive plan. And put it in the land development code.
You got it now? Any questions? Just second.
Don.
Don? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else? We'll give them about three seconds. I didn't hear nothing, so we're adjourned.
All right.
Good job, Mark.
France? Enjoy it, guys.